Good evening and welcome to the August 7, 2013 Meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We have a quorum presence, so I'll call the meeting to order. Before we get into the body of our agenda tonight, Mr. Adelot, you have some guests visiting us tonight.
Yes, we do. We have members of the City of Lebanon, Tennessee Planning Commission. We have with us the Plan Director, Paul Quarter, and then David Taylor, Joe Hayes, Jesse Gillam, Beulah Garrett, Rick Bell, and Matt McCleskey. And upon conclusion of the meeting, you all can get your list and go home. We're glad to have you and we hope that someday maybe we'll join your halls to see how Lebanon, Tennessee operates.
Thank you very much for coming. Mr. Adelot made me promise to be on my best behavior and try not to mess anything up tonight, so I'll certainly try to do that. We have six public hearings scheduled for this evening. And before I open the, get into the first one here, let me briefly describe the way we conduct our public hearings here. When we open the public hearing, you'll be invited to come forward if you'd like to speak, to come to the microphone. Please give your name and address and keep your comments no more than three minutes, if you would. If you have any questions, make those questions toward the Planning Commission. The staff will make note of your questions and we will try to get those answered by the staff at the conclusion of the public hearing. All that being said, I'll go to the first public hearing, which is a zoning application for rezoning of approximately .89 acres along Oval Hessin Lane from Office General to RZ, Decker and Belt are the applicants. Ms. Ely?
No.
Ms. Green, excuse me. We change names here every few weeks, so. Ms. Green, excuse me.
I hope not. Don't tell my husband. Yes, sir. Our first public hearing this evening is to consider a zoning change for property that's located north of Oval Hessin Lane. This property is approximately 0.89 acres in size and it's identified as the blue on the map that's on the screen before you. It is adjacent to property that's currently developed as a Salem Glen Crossing subdivision and it is just west of St. Andrews Drive. The owners have made an application to rezone the property from its current OG zone, which is General Office District Residential, to RZ, which is Zero Lot Line Residential District. That RZ zoning district is contiguous with, or that RZ zone proposed is contiguous with adjacent RZ zone in the Salem Glen Crossing. You can see the developed parcels to the west of the property are also zoned RZ. It is the applicant's desire to develop this property with single-family detached homes that will be an extension of that Salem Glen Crossing subdivision. The Planning Commission should conduct a public hearing prior to making your recommendation regarding this zoning change. If you have any questions, staff will be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing.
Okay. Is anybody representing the applicant like to speak?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Chairman Lamb, Planning Commission, Kevin Gunther with Huddleston Steel. We're here to represent this rezoning request. It's simply an extension of the existing RZ that's in that district. We'd like to extend approximately six lots. The developer feels that there's no real need at this time for the office and they would propose to build quality, single-family homes as they've done in other communities in Murfreesboro. And Mr. Dan Decker is here, as well as myself, to answer any questions or provide more information if you require it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gunther. That being said, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Anybody at all? In that case, I'll close the public hearing. Are there any comments by members of the staff or the Planning Commission or questions? If not, we're ready for a motion.
Chairman Lamb, I'll make the motion that we approve the rezoning application.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Second public hearing, this is zoning application for the rezoning of approximately 34.9 acres north of Salem Highway at Kinsale Avenue from RS-15 to PRD, Old South Properties Incorporated is applicant. Ms. Green?
Thank you, sir. Our second public hearing this evening is to consider a zoning change for property that is located at the terminus of Maple Side Lane and it is located just south of the St. Andrews Place subdivision. The property is currently zoned RS-15, which is Single Family Residential District, and it was zoned RS-15 when it was annexed in 2005. At that time, there were no development plans for the property and it came to the city with its interim zoning classification of RS-15. Since that time, there's been no request to change the zoning. What you have before you tonight, however, is a request to change the zoning for a portion of the parcel. It is surrounded on the west, north, and east by developed city, single-family subdivisions. To the south is the remainder of the property, which is undeveloped land and will continue to be zoned RS-15. The application is to rezone the property from RS-15 to PRD to allow the development of 150 single-family detached dwellings on the 34.9 acres as described in the program book, which is included in your packets. The applicants are proposing to change the zoning to PRD and allow this development to, for this to be a continuation of the development of the St. Andrews Place city single-family subdivision. Mr. Kevin Gunther is here this evening and he's representing the applicant. I believe the developers are also present if you have questions from them. But before you open your public hearing, Mr. Gunther would like to present the item to you and if you have any questions, staff will be glad to answer them.
Sure.
Okay. Good evening, Chairman Lamb, Planning Commissioners, once again Kevin Gunther with Huddleston Steel Engineering. And I believe I'd like to go through the pattern book if it's possible. Thank you for bringing that up. St. Andrews Place is a planned development project that is very similar to what exists to the north of this project. And as you see in that first picture, we feel this is a very good representation of what this community will look and feel like. These are very similar architectural homes. These are on 60-foot wide lots. We are proposing 55-foot wide lots. And one of the differences will be we will have sidewalks on both sides of the street. But other than that, we believe this image is a very good representation of what the neighborhood will feel like. As you can see, we've got good connection to the surrounding road network. St. Andrews Place connects to both Highway 99, Salem Pike, and also Highway 96 to the north. As Ms. Green had mentioned, we fit well in the context of the neighborhood. We have RZ zoning, RM 16 to the southeast and southwest of us, and we are literally almost identical to the planned development to the northwest of us. We feel this will be a walkable community. That is one of the reasons the sidewalks, I think, are a real plus. We have two elementary schools within walking distance and also a small community market. And we feel that this is a good location to extend the neighborhood that's already As you can see from the master plan, there's a large portion of the site that we're dedicating towards open space. That'll be primarily used for environmental quality and stormwater control. And we are proposing good connection to the property to the south of us, as well as connecting to the road network that's in place. The typical lot diagram, we work very closely with Old South Homes to make sure these homes fit well in these lots. And as you can see, they are committing to not only good placement of the homes and good architecture, but a landscape package will be part of the development, as well as there will be some quality of streetscape in the metal mailboxes that'll be uniform along the street. On the corner lots, we have an opportunity to actually put a side-loaded garage on one side. What this does is that you can see in the front facades that face the other portion of the street, we can extend that front facade and cap off the block very nicely with that side-loaded garage on one side. These are examples of the homes that are proposed. The front facades, there's a commitment from Old South Properties that we will do masonry, brick, stone, and hardy plank front facades. They want to do a mixture of one-story, one-and-a-half-story, and two-story homes and provide kind of that mixture of home availability, but also at the same time, I think, as you saw from those photographs, they've worked very hard at creating a sense of unity in the neighborhood with the variation of home sizes. That being said, we would like to respectfully ask for your recommendation approval of the project this evening. Mr. John Floyd and myself will be available if you need any further information. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions from Mr. Gunther or Mr. Floyd? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This time, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak, either for or against this proposal. Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions by members of the Planning Commission?
Chairman Lamb, if there are no questions, I'm ready for approval. Is that your staff coming?
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item C under the public hearings is the annexation petition for approximately 2.28 acres along Elum Road. Jerry Benefield and Bob Parks are the applicants. Ms. Green?
Thank you, sir. Our third public hearing this evening is to consider an annexation request made by the property owner of 2.28 acres located east of Elum Road. The annexation study also includes approximately 550 linear feet of Elum Road right-of-way and you can see on the map that the current city limits are identified in the yellow. And so the property is contiguous with current city limits on two of its sides and the requested area for which an annexation petition has been made is identified in the blue color. And then the pink color is the right-of-way that's also being included in this annexation study. The property is contiguous with this existing city limits on two sides. It's within the city's urban growth boundary. No other parcels are required to be annexed in order to affect the annexation of this parcel, so no other properties need to be included. All the owners have petitioned the city to annex the property, so these are by request. The city already provides city services to the contiguous developing city, single-family subdivision and will be able to provide services to this parcel upon its annexation. There has been a feasibility study and a plan of service, plan of service provided to you in your program book, which outlines when, what services the city will provide and when we'll provide them. It appears that all services will be available to this property immediately upon the effective date of annexation, with some of those services being extended as the property develops. The Planning Commission will need to conduct a public hearing prior to making its recommendation. Mr. Matt Taylor is here this evening and he's representing the applicant for both this request and the next agenda item will be to consider a zoning change for this property. Mr. Taylor would like to, would not like to introduce the project.
Mr. Taylor being his usual talkative self.
He'd like to talk about the zoning, I believe, but if you have questions, he's certainly available.
Okay. Our first public hearing on this pertains to annexation. This time, I'll open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to speak. Once again, seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing. I think we're ready for a motion.
Can I ask one quick question?
Yes, ma'am.
The extra little piece that I guess is to the north of the blue area, is that a different owner of the property?
It is.
Yes.
Any other questions?
I have questions to approve, or to approve this annexation request.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Moving on to the second public hearing on this same property, a zoning application for zoning of approximately 2.28 acres to RS-8 simultaneous annexation, Jerry Benefield, Bob Parks applicant. Ms. Green?
Thank you, sir. Our next public hearing is to consider a companion zoning change request for the property which we just studied for annexation and you recommend the adoption of plan of services for. The property is shown in blue on the map that's on the screen and in the county is currently zoned for residential agricultural purposes. The property is located along the east side of Elum Road, adjacent to the Somersby subdivision. The Somersby subdivision is the property's zoned PRD, Planned Residential District on the map. And the applicant is requesting that simultaneous with its annexation, you change the zoning of this property to RS-8, which is Single Family Residential District. The RS-8 zone has a minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet and it requires a minimum lot width of 55 feet. Mr. Matt Taylor would like to speak regarding the zoning change request for this property prior to your public hearing, after which, of course, you should conduct a public hearing prior to making your recommendation to City Council. If any questions, staff will be glad to answer them.
Good evening. I'll be brief. We do view this as a natural expansion or extension of Somersby. All of our lots will front and access on Elum Road. We're anticipating, I think, six or seven lots. And we have worked with staff. There was some concern about backing onto Elum Road due to how busy it is. We anticipate all of these to be side or rear-entry homes. That's part of the reason why we've chosen this zoning classification. Decided to back to let us do that. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions from Mr. Gunther?
I'll add to the Planning Commission that when we review a subdivision for that property, we will contemplate placing a platino to require those types of driveways.
Okay. If there's no questions, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak on this proposal. Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Do you have any questions, Ms. Jones?
No.
Anybody else have any questions?
With no questions, Chairman Lamb, I'll make the motion that we approve this RS-8 application.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Item M is an annexation petition for approximately 272 acres south of John Bragg Highway, University Villas, and Marshall Lyons, the applicants. Ms. Green?
Thank you, sir. Our next item is to consider the annexation of some properties located south of John Bragg Highway or Highway 70S. These properties look familiar to you because this year you did review and consider an annexation request for two of the parcels that are shown on this map. That previous study did include some additional property to the east of the study area and you did recommend that the property be annexed and you approved the plan of services. The matter was forwarded to City Council. City Council's recommendation was also, or decision was to annex the property. But at City Council, it came to the attention of staff that there were some of the property owners who did not desire annexation. And so prior to the third and final reading, the applicant requested to withdraw the petition for annexation out of courtesy to the adjoining affected property owner who did not desire the property to be annexed and have made a new petition now to annex land that includes all their formal petition, as well additional land to the south that is contiguous with current city limits, without affecting any property owners that do not desire annexation of the property. So the map that you have on the screen has the current city limits identified in yellow and the requested area as the area shaded orange. The two northern parcels are the parcels that were included in the previous study and then the southern parcel where the arrow is saying requested area. Adjacent to the Aspen Heights Student Multifamily Complex is part of the additional area that has been included. The study also includes 1,856 linear feet of John Bragg right-of-way in the study and so for a total of 272 acres for the entire area being annexed. The property, the plan of services has been revised to show the properties which are currently now part of the study. All the properties are contiguous with current city limits with the annexation of that southernmost parcel. You can see it's contiguous with city limits along its western property line. The properties are also within our urban growth boundary and so we have the ability to annex the properties. All the property owners affected by this annexation have petitioned the city to annex the properties. Included with your agenda materials is a plan of service and a feasibility study, which outlines the types of services the city will provide and a timeframe for when we can provide them. It's expected that we will be able to provide and extend services to the property upon development, such as our services, including any access to schools or building and codes and planning services, police protection, fire protection. However, there is one service that does not appear, is going to be available in sufficient capacity to support the development of the property, and that's sanitary sewer. That's an issue that we studied previously. So sanitary sewer service does not appear to be available to the property in sufficient capacity to support the proposed development of the property. And you may remember, there was a companion zoning change request, which will change the zoning for these properties to commercial, the two northern parcels to Commercial Highway and to multifamily residential district. That request isn't changing, so that's not coming back to you tonight. The only thing that's changing are the properties that are being annexed. So the parcel that wasn't included in that zoning change will come into the city with the interim zoning of RS-15, Single Family Residential District, and any future development would have to be reviewed in the future. And of course, you would have to approve any zoning change. The owners have discussed with the city staff the possibility that an alternative means of sanitary waste treatment may be necessary for the property, so they're aware of that and so any plans we would review would require that. The Planning Commission should conduct a public hearing prior to forwarding your recommendation regarding the annexation and adoption of this plan of services. If you have any questions about the item, I'll be glad to answer them either before or after the public hearing.
Ms. Green, the only thing different in this than what we considered previously is the elimination of that one parcel.
Yes.
Okay.
And the addition of additional land.
Okay. Yeah.
The southern parcel, the southern square, is the additional land. I don't, I didn't think to bring the old map with me.
It's okay. Any questions from Mrs. Green? If not, I'll open the public hearing and ask anybody to come forward that'd like to Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions or comments by the Planning Commission? If not, we're ready for a motion.
Move for approval, Chairman? Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. The final public hearing tonight is a zoning application for the rezoning of approximately 1.64 acres from RS-12 to RM 16 along the east side of Casey Lane. Mrs. Violet Ojeno is the applicant. Ms. Green?
Thank you, sir. Our final public hearing this evening is to consider a zoning change for property located east of Casey Lane. This property is currently a portion of a larger parcel. The subject area is shown on the map that you have on the screen as a zoomed-out area. On the second map, shows the property closer and the majority of the parcel is zoned RM 16, Multifamily Residential District, and this portion of the property, this 1.64 acres, is currently zoned RS-12, Single Family Residential District. The property is undeveloped and is, and of course, is part of that larger tract. The owner is making an application for the remaining portion of the property to be rezoned from RS-12 to RM 16 to be contiguous or to be the same zoning classification as the remainder of the tract. And I think it's anticipating selling the entire parcel. The subject property is situated in an unusual manner in that the property is located such that the eventual extension of Sawmill Street, which you can see on the map before you, from the east will be extended to Casey Lane. And it will, and it will dissect this property. It's been contemplated that this short street segment would be constructed as development took place on the subject property. This street linkage appears to be a very beneficial street connection for a variety of purposes, including traffic distribution, and it will improve the ability of the city to provide service delivery. It also would be very useful for pedestrian linkage from the subdivision to the east and south to the Casey Lane Academy and commercial areas to the south. The property was zoned RS-12 in April 2003. At the same time, the property to the south was zoned RM 16. This area was zoned RM 12 at the time, in part to act as a buffer to the residential subdivision to the north from the contemplated multifamily development to the south. It was also considered at that time that it would be more in keeping with those subdivisions to have single-family dwellings on the three or four lots that could possibly be developed on this, on that street segment to be similar in zoning to the subdivisions to the east that would enter that area through Sawmill Street. The applicant has attempted to market the property as it currently is zoned over the course of the last 10 years, and that would be Ms. Ojeno. Apparently, she has been unsuccessful in part because potential developers of the multifamily portion are not interested in the single-family portion, and the single-family developers are not interested in the amount of street that will be required to be constructed in relationship to the number of lots that can be achieved. So with being only able to construct only three or four dwelling units and the cost of extending that street is pretty significant, so it hasn't been a good option for anybody so far because it just isn't beneficial to, or doesn't work out financially to extend that street. So the Planning Commission will need to conduct a public hearing to consider changing this 1.64 portion of acre, portion of property from its current RS-12 district to RM 16. Staff will be able to answer any questions you have either before or after the public hearing and I haven't been, I don't know if there's anybody representing the applicant here.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, yes, there is. I'll go ahead and invite him to the lectern. Do you have anything?
I'll make some comments.
Okay. Mr. Bradshaw will wait.
Okay.
You should conduct your public hearing.
Any other questions before we open the public hearing? Mr. Bradshaw, you're welcome to come up and make your comments prior to opening the public hearing if you'd like.
Good evening, Chairman Lamb, and members of the Planning Commission. I'm Chris Bradshaw with Red Realty at 522 Uptown Square in Murfreesboro. I'm here tonight representing Bill and Violet Ojeno and Mr. John Vaughn, who are the owners of the property. We have got a developer who's interested in developing the RM 16 part of this property, which is the larger tract. And the problem has come into play of this little small slither at the very northern part of this property that's zoned RS-12. The city is requiring the extension of Sawmill Drive, which kind of divides that little small part into two different lots. The entrance into the RM 16 will come on the southern part of that extension, which will again divide that other small lot. And it makes it kind of not very feasible to develop it under single-family scenarios. So we're asking that it be zoned RM 16 so it can be developed with this entire tract. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Mr. Bradshaw, would you even have, north of where Sawmill will cut through, are you going to be able to, is there enough property there to do anything with it, even as RM 16?
No, I, as talking with the engineer and talking with the developers, that's about four tenths of an acre and it being on a corner lot with a front side, front setback and a side setback, it really has no use as a single-family or multifamily, quite honestly. We talked about using it maybe as a retention area or something, so it would probably stay green.
So you couldn't put just one single-family house on that portion, the north of Sawmill, and then the RM 16 on the south of Sawmill?
I'm not, I'm not sure if the developer wants to do the residential. I mean, I'm sure you probably put something on a four-tenths acre with the setbacks. I'm not really sure. I'm not a developer, so I don't really, I can't answer if that lot would be, the interior lot would be, the corner lot would be feasible to do that on. Because the extension of Sawmill kind of divides it and it kind of leaves that one side kind of out there by itself.
Ms. Jones, in addition to what you're seeing, one of the things you don't see is that the west side of the lot between, right, adjacent to the right-of-way of Casey Lane and along the north side, there's a large concrete lined ditch that is on the property. And then there's an easement for it, and that was built along with the Casey Lane when Casey Lane was constructed for drainage. And that takes another big bite out of the lot area. Although it looks like, it's bound in the property and it's, and it certainly is part of the lot area, from a usability standpoint, it further limits the use of the property. And that's the part that's particularly to the north.
Thank you.
Any other questions from Mr. Bradshaw? Thank you, sir. I'll open the public hearing at this time and ask anybody to come forward that'd like
My name is Margaret Morgan and I live at 2094 Split Railroad. And I talked to all of my neighbors, all the ones on Split Rail, and there's none of them that are for this. They don't like the idea of their backyards having apartments there. And some of them were going to come, but they had to work and this and that came up. But none of, nobody is in favor of it. They like their neighborhood as a single-family dwelling. They're not opposed to having this houses there, but they're opposed to apartments and they feel that their property would be devaluated, their houses by apartments there. Even though across the street on Casey, along the west side, there's apartments, but nobody in that neighborhood wants it.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Nobody's coming forward. I'm going to close the public hearing. Mr. Adelot, the household split railroad, most of them back up to the existing RM 16 property, do they not?
That is correct.
I'm just wondering if she was confused about that, if you might be able to get with her after the meeting.
I was wondering, I was wondering the same thing, Chairman Lamb, and I will give her this illustration, it will help her see that a little bit closer.
Ms. Morgan, if you would. Ms. Morgan, if you would, meet Mr. Adalot after the meeting's over, if you would, please, and let him explain what's going on to you, please. Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming down tonight.
Joseph, and furthering so that, if you look at the area that's proposed, as far as split rail is concerned, there's actually only one additional house that comes sort of off of split rail that's going to be affected by this request. All those others are already backing up, as Mr. Lamb says. Is that correct?
That is correct, and the additional one that would share the common lot line with the area that's being rezoned is perhaps the very deepest lot.
Of the lots on there.
Yes, and I think the house is maybe some distance from the property line.
Okay. Any other questions or comments about the planning commission?
And so on the, but backing up to split rail, then, that RM16 is still vacant land, and on the other side of Casey Lane, it has been developed as RM16?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Thank you.
Members of the planning commission, I guess I'm one of the architects who set in motion the current zoning. And I think it was with very good intentions that we, as a planning staff and then a planning commission, adopted the zone to keep it RS12 where Sawmill Street would extend. At that point in time, the development had not taken place across the street. The Ojinos were looking to establish a zoning plan that was consistent with the Salem Pike Land use plan. They were trying to plan for the property. We saw the need for Sawmill Street to be extended. We knew it needed to be done. We even constructed the turnouts in the curbs when we built Casey Lane with that eventuality in mind. We saw the need for that street connection for our long-term traffic management program. We had the expectation that, for some reason, someone would come along that would want to build single-family lots there. Ms. Ojino has been marketing her property. We've actually approved a couple of apartment complexes on the RM16, actually, one RM16 complex on that RM16 property. And it was right at the time that the economy tanked, and those people went away before they ever broke ground. They got their approvals, but they walked away from it. But even then, they weren't buying that RS12 part. Recently, I've had a very, very good meeting, actually, a series of meetings with a group that's looking to develop the property. They're doing due diligence, and they come up against the situation. Well, if we buy it, we don't want to, we don't want to build single-family homes there. What we do want to build is a, probably, a low-density multifamily community comparable with the Stonebridge development to the south, maybe a less dense version of that. They have demonstrated a very cogent development program. They're still in due diligence. They haven't, they haven't really got to the point of design and ready to turn it into the planning commission. But I've looked at two different iterations, and they keep on fine-tuning their program. This is one of the holdups. They need to know, are we going to buy the whole thing, or are we going to only buy part of it? If it's not zoned RM16, they're not going to buy the whole thing. If it is zoned RM16, I think they will buy the whole thing and incorporate their access drive into the property. And they will probably incorporate a detention area on the property to the north. I say probably because they've not got to the final design, but that seems to be a very hopeful and a very realistic approach. And I see it as a good alternative. I think that the, we've had a lot of multifamily programs come in. I think we're beginning to see, the markets say, let's hold up on seeing the development of that type right now. But we don't see many of these active adult communities, and I think we're probably going to see a series of those in probably over the next two or three years. And this would be, this would be a very prime location for that.
And so you're talking about this 1.64 acres would, the developer that's looking at it is looking at the RM16 adjoining parcel as well?
That is correct.
And this would just be an extra part to add on to that?
That's correct, and they would make their access drive on it, which would line up very well with Casey Lane and the street across the roadway, instead of creating another access point that's in conflict with those existing access drives on the other side of the street.
Okay, any other questions?
So do you see that they would have access to Sawmill, or no?
Yes, they would.
Okay.
That'd be my expectation.
Okay.
Did you get the handout? It shows a little.
And so then really, oh, yeah, so there wouldn't be apartments necessarily beside the RS12 lots that are there, but there would be apartments that's already zoned that way?
There's not a lot of room for big buildings, and actually, they're not looking at big buildings in the program that I've been looking at. Of course, if this one goes away, someone else may take its place, but, and I can't predict what that would be. But the program I'm looking at would be small buildings. And when I said Stonebridge to the south, you may recall that was part of the Three Rivers, the Greater Three Rivers. It wasn't Three Rivers itself, but it came through, the Three Rivers, Section 1. They captioned it as an active adult with, in that case, they were quadruplex structures. The one I've looked at has both duplex and triplex and quad-type structures, with amenities that would appeal to, well, to people like myself and to you all. Not like the college kids.
Okay. If there's no further questions, we're ready for a motion. Chairman, if there are no questions, I move for approval.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. That concludes the public hearing. A portion of our agenda is now moved on to staff reports and other business. Ms. Green, I understand you have a very good staff report for us here.
I have two. I'll do the not-so-good one first.
Okay.
I'd like to, with your permission, bring up a subdivision plat under other business for St. Andrews Place, Section 6, Phase 2. Mr. Huddleston will give you a copy of the plats for you to look at. This Mylar was printed and circulated to various departments. I think there was a misunderstanding on the part of the design team for this project. They hadn't brought it to you for approval, and it certainly requires planning commission approval because it's a final plat for 22 lots on 5.76 acres. And then when we got it in our office, of course, inquired into it to why it had even reached our office at this point, and there was a misunderstanding. So I offered to bring it up under other business to you to consider it because it's a relatively simple plat. It is, the construction for, the infrastructure is complete. The preliminary plats, construction plats have all been approved. The construction's complete. They're now ready to record the plat and sell the lots to builders so that they can build houses on them. I did take an opportunity to look at the plat with Mr. Huddleston, Mr. Adalot. The lots do meet the minimum requirements. The property is zoned RS10, and so the minimum lot size is 10,000 square feet without the need for rounding, and all those lots meet that minimum requirement. The constructed elements are in place. We have received their bond. We've received the money for the repayment assessment. We have, the only thing we haven't gotten are the application and review fee for this project. So Mr. Decker happened to be here this evening and was very excited about the idea of us reviewing and approving this tonight. But of course, I would like a condition be that that application and the fee be paid prior to us signing it, and preferably by Friday, and I think that he is anxious to get that done anyway, so I think he'll get that to us, and is a little embarrassed about the misunderstanding, but.
I think he's good for it.
Good point.
I think he's good for it.
He is.
So you want us to consider this as if it was plats and plans?
Yes, sir.
Let me make sure it's okay with all the members of the planning commission, if I can see a show on the hands. Okay. Did you read it into the record then appropriately?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure, because you kind of went around the.
Okay, so it's a final plat for St. Andrews Place, Section 6, Phase 2. It's 5.76 acres and 22 lots zoned RS10. The property is located adjacent to the currently developing St. Andrews Place subdivision, just south of the developing subdivision. It meets all of our minimum standards. We've approved the planning, we've approved the preliminary plat and the construction plans. The elements are in place. We've received the fees that we need, and it is ready for approval if you deem it appropriate.
Are there any questions? We're ready for a motion. Move for approval, Chairman.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Green. Now, on to the important part.
That's right. Today, at 11:07 a.m., Mr. Blomley and his wife Sarah gave birth to a little boy named Nathan Thomas Blomley. There's a photograph of him, so we'll go ahead and have that put up on the screen. Nathan, or Nate for short, is, he was born eight pounds, 12 ounces, 20 inches long, a strong, healthy baby. Mom is doing well. And he's a healthy baby boy.
I'm surprised he doesn't have a little Auburn diaper on or something.
I'm surprised, too. Mr. Blomley will be back next month, and I'm sure he will be excited to show pictures of Nate to you.
Well, that's good. Our congratulations to Sarah and Nathan.
Mommy baby is fine, and daddy is worn out.
I believe he'll be a changed man.
Well, we'll all greet him next time we see him. Do you have any other business, Mrs. Green?
No, sir.
Mr. Adalot?
No, sir.
Counselor?
No, sir.
Mr. Huddleston?
No, sir.